Good evening and welcome to the January 16, 2009 Meeting of the Milton School Committee. As is our tradition, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so we have some guests here, so I'm going to move Superintendent 4A up ahead of Citizen Speak, so that we can hear from our middle school guests first, and then I'm going to add a Item 6D to the Finance Subcommittee Report, so 6D will be Reauthorization of the Milton High School Student Activities Fund.
We have, thank you Chairman Donahue, we have some Pierce players with us this evening, and they're going to give us a sample and tell us about the upcoming High School Musical Junior, and here's a little secret on TV, this is the school committee's in Central Office, two favorite nights of all your school committee meetings is when the Pierce comes and sings and dances, so welcome, with Kyle Alves, our Pierce Assistant Principal, so we'll have them, as they say in show business, take it away.
Good job.
Do we just like say our names and stuff?
Well, I'm thrilled to introduce five members of the 130 casting crew. It was amazing this evening when I got to watch a dress rehearsal, to see 12- to 14-year roles perform as professionals, I thought I was at Broadway. They were truly, truly incredible, and I personally, and on behalf of Dr. Spalding and Dr. Fitzgerald, like to thank all of the students, as well as Mr. DeShane and Mrs. Aronberger for all of their dedication and hard work, nights and nights and nights of working with the students so that they can put on the best performance that they're going to put on for the next three nights of sold-out shows. So, ladies and gentlemen, talk about yourselves, introduce yourselves, and talk about the show.
Greta, just take the mic out and pass it around, so people at home can hear you, okay?
My name is Greta Cardoza, and I play Gabriela Montez in High School Musical Junior. Should I explain?
Yeah, why don't you give a little synopsis?
Okay, so she's kind of like the new girl at her school, and she doesn't really fit into like a clique yet, or like the stereotype, so you know, she doesn't really stick to the status quo, and even though she's a brainiac, she wants to audition for the musical, and yeah.
My name is Priya Shaw, and I play Sharpay Evans in the show, and she's kind of the mean girl of the show, and she wants everything for herself, so when Gabriela comes, she's afraid that Gabriela's gonna steal her spotlight, so she does everything she can to try to get like the role she wants, and try to like, just like, make sure everything is like the way it used to be with all this different stereotypes, so she's still like on top of everything.
My name is Isabel Filoni, and I play Ms. Darvis, and I'm the theater teacher, and my favorite students are Ryan and Sharpay Evans, because they're extreme theater fanatics, you could say, and I'm shocked that Troy Bolton and Gabriela Montez would wanna try out for the play, because I have like a feud with Troy's dad because of basketball, and they kinda like clash, so it's a very interesting character to play, and I hope you enjoy.
I'm Sam Lawrence, I play Ryan Evans, I'm Sharpay's brother, and I basically do everything she says. I don't really have a backbone, and I, yeah. Yeah, it's fun, you know, there's a lot of practice and...
I'm Attica Stellisandro, I'm Troy Bolton, and he's like this like jock dude, and everyone loves him, he's captain of the basketball team, uh, yeah, and so, he is really conflicted, because all his friends want him to, you know, like, get to the championship game and win the championship, but he wants to sing and audition for the musical, and so, and his dad is like, "No, don't do it," and Ms. Darvis is like, "Yes, do it," and it's, yeah, so...
All right. So, are you gonna do, are you gonna sing a song?
Yes.
Yeah?
So, what, do, yeah, you should take the microphones out.
Yeah.
And stand up.
Stand up.
Stand up.
You can go over there.
Camera?
Come right over there, like right over there.
Camera? Line up over there. Tell them what to do. Yeah. Perfect, right, yep, turn around, there's the camera. Be famous. Miss Drama Teacher, Boston Celtics. Move over, move over.
It's rubbing off of me.
Yes, let's go.
Here and now, it's time for celebration, I've finally figured out
Yeah, yeah!
That all our dreams have no limitations, that's what it's all about.
Now, everyone is special in their own way, we make each other strong
Make each other strong.
We're not the same
We're different in a good way
Together's where we belong
We're all in this together, once we know that we are, we're all stars
And we see that, we're all in this together
And it shows when we stand, and it can make our dreams come true
Very nice. So, we should tell when the show is...
Yes.
Can you again say the dates, the times, and is it completely sold out, or can people buy tickets?
It's sold out. Completely sold out.
Really? This is like PR. Wow. You just broke everyone's heart at home, oh, okay. Break a leg, guys.
So, we're so proud of you, and as Mr. Al said, we've heard snippets, but the fortunate audiences and those three shows who have their tickets and they're ready to go, we have, the show can't go on, though, without the crew, and we have a member of the crew in the back, big round of applause.
Thank you, good luck.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, good luck.
Break a leg.
Wow. Is this the first time that a show is ever sold out there in advance?
I think so.
I think it is.
Keep your playbills.
The physical man still has the, still has the power.
Online sales for the first time, this show.
I noticed on Milton Neighbors, which is a Facebook page, people are looking for tickets, they're asking people if anyone has a ticket.
Scouting skin. Hamilton from Milton. Wow, I can't, Michelle, I have to talk to you offline, how am I gonna see it? Sorry. Okay.
So proud of you, congratulations.
Do you have any questions?
No, I wish you luck. I give it to you. Hey, we're good. Congrats, okay? Good luck. Online, I mean, that's the way to go, right? You know, if you have a... I know.
All right, so, um, this evening, we were going to do an extended Citizen Speak if members of the public wanted to come and talk to us about the space issue and some of the recommendations that they have heard, the reason we're doing it as an extended Citizen Speak is so that the public gets a chance to talk, and we don't take up that much time. So, with that, if there's anybody here from Citizen Speak, for Citizen Speak, I'd like to ask them just to sign in, so we get your, your name and address correct, and then you can, you can come up to the microphone and give us your three minutes, if you'd like. Okay? Nope, okay, all right, so with that, um, yep, we're back to 4B, which is the draft school year calendar for 2019, 2020.
Very briefly, we've put in your packets, next year's school calendar, we get lots of calls, families making trip plans, camp plans, vacation plans, so if you take a look at that, and we'll vote it at the next meeting, don't hesitate to call us if you have any suggestions, the leadership team has gone over this several times, we got feedback from families and staff, and we'll vote it at our next meeting, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so with that, that brings us to our, our presentation from DRA, I think this is now the third week in a row that we've heard from you, in one form or another, so welcome back.
Good evening.
We updated the presentation slightly based on some of the feedback, and a little bit of review since last week, and I think you got a copy of it in front of you, so we can go fairly quickly over most of it, I think, in that it's similar to what you've seen previously, is it the, there we go, so the same goals, and we're near the end now, having kind of reviewed recommendations and modified them, the, the need is still there, the, those numbers haven't changed since last time, again, particularly, you know, looking at the, the short-term need, which you can see in this chart, or, oops, sorry, this chart right here, is, you know, in the vicinity of, of 100 students in, in just a couple of years, in K through 5, thanks, Mira, and we've had some discussion about, you know, the best way to accommodate that in the short term, and, and thinking about how those short-term choices affect the long-term options as well. Here's where, you know, the district is today, with roughly 16 kindergarten classrooms, 79 classrooms for grades 1 through 5, but what's needed, even in the short term, is, you know, on the order of magnitude of about 20 more classrooms across the district in the elementary schools, and that's, you know, basically keeping the preschool enrollment steady, and assuming that the art and music rooms are restored, it would come to about 20 needed in the short term, and about 25 or 26 in the long term, and so, we've, we have modified some of the options to reflect that, too, to make sure that we do address this, if, you know, if you are gonna consider, you know, something, and any of these are significant in terms of investment, we want to make sure that we adequately accommodate the classrooms that are needed, both at kindergarten and grades 1 through 5. So, we looked at the middle school and high school, too, and just to be certain, I don't know that we had this last time, we tried to take the, the projections out for them as well, even though it wasn't technically part of our study to look at the middle schools and, and high schools, in the short term, the middle school looks okay, certainly, they do use all their spaces right now, as we project out, there may be a shortfall, or classes, class sizes may have to jump slightly in 10 years, where the enrollment increases there, you can see to almost 1,100 students in, in the 10-year projections in grades 6 through 8, versus 960, I think it is today, and likewise, at the high school, we looked at both short-term and longer-term there, and again, it's, it's somewhat similar, in the short term, things are okay, we'd say, at the high school, the spaces are certainly being utilized, at least at, at a rule of thumb of 85% or so, and in the long term, they, they may actually experience a bit more tightness, you know, this is a very sort of rough rule of thumb guidelines as to how many classrooms may be needed at the high school, when the enrollment peaks in the 10-year projections at over 1,200 students, and again, it may affect class sizes, it may affect scheduling, it may affect utilization, and hopefully, you know, the, the same curriculum can be maintained, you know, the same number of, of some smaller seminarized, seminar-sized classes, as well as, you know, full 24, 25 student classes as well, but there doesn't seem to be a significant issue at the high school, but certainly, at both the middle school and high school, does not, neither, neither building offers any relief to the elementary school space needs, that's, that conclusion, I think, is, can be fairly certain. So, looking at the options, the, these are the short-term options we identified, again, all similar ones that we presented previously, and likewise, the, the long-term options are the same as well, and they all start with doing nothing, and simply allowing, you know, class size to increase, to doing all the way to, you know, a, a new freestanding K through 5 school, because after all, as we identified, about 24 to 26 classrooms are needed, that is the size of a, of a four-section elementary school. Here's what that, you might say, looks like graphically, in the short term, as, as we said again, nothing's really changed in terms of the options, but you can see the total number of classrooms being added here, unless you did all of these, class size would still be affected, to get to that, to that number, but it certainly helps, it doesn't help in other ways, obviously, if you convert the art and music rooms, it does affect those programs, but it does allow at least class size to be maintained, or at least reduced from, from a worst-case situation. And in the longer-term options, we, we did adjust some of these numbers slightly, at the early ed center, if that were to be built, or at the high school addition of an early ed center, we did increase those numbers to 26, recognizing, I, I think there was an issue with the way we were looking at preschool enrollment, we were thinking that the numbers listed needed to be divided by 2, because they were half-day sessions, but I think they were already accounting for that, so that's why these numbers creeped up a little bit from what we showed you last time, we did review those, so, those 26 classrooms, I believe, are 19 or 20 kindergarten rooms and 6 or 7 pre-K rooms, that, that's how that breaks down, and you can see that all of these solutions are not necessarily equal, some of these are, are fewer classrooms than, than others, we also did recognize that if a new school were to be built, it probably should include some preschool rooms, so in addition to the four sections per grade, we added 2 preschool rooms, that's why that count is, is now 26, I think that's a more realistic comparison, and you, you can see that, you know, in, in a couple of these long-term options, then, the, the basic addition to the district is 26 additional classrooms for pre-K through 5. So, taking that a little bit further, to show you what these mean, you've seen these graphics before, just again, to recap, that at Glover, there's still the possibility of converting this somewhat smaller art room and the music room, and gaining 2 classrooms there, at, and also the possibility of constructing, carving out a classroom out of the library space, there, by, in essence, reducing the library by a third, and, and building a, a couple walls, or actually just one wall in this case, to create that, that classroom there, so 3 classrooms could be gained at the Glover, at, at the Cunningham School, there's a teachers' room that could be converted by shifting the teachers' room into what is now an art room, and perhaps, and gaining 1 classroom there, on the other side of the building, at Collicott, again, there's a music room that may not have windows there, it's on an upper level, that possibly could be converted to, to gain 1 more classroom, although, again, it would be substandard without natural light that the other classrooms enjoy, and likewise, here, we show the possibility of, of carving out 1 classroom out of the library space, that's leaving alone this, this other classroom, which is already a special ed program there, but you can see just sort of proportionally how that reduces the library size, so there's a gain of, of 2 classrooms in that, in those moves, and at Tucker, the option is to convert the art room here, on the first floor, and secondarily, the computer room, which is right here now, could be expanded, 1 wall would have to be taken out, and new walls built, but that could be expanded to be the size of a full-size classroom there, and it does have a couple windows here, to get some natural light, to make that a realistic possibility, so there, the, the possibility of adding 2 classrooms in the short term, and again, these kinds of moves are, are relatively low-cost, low-impact, could be done over a summer, maybe not this coming summer, that's quick, but the, perhaps the following summer, to get them online, as we say, to handle the short-term needs. And then there's also the possibility of renting modulars, and just to share with you, as we did, to show where those might fit on these, these campuses, you can see, there's 3 classrooms of modulars on the backside of the gym, and it, it takes away some of that playground space there, at, at the Collicott-Cunningham site, there's 4 classrooms, you know, on, sitting on top of that playground, reducing an already sort of substandard amount of play space for, for the number of students at, at this site, but that's what 4 classrooms would look like there, and at the Tucker, 4, a single classroom would, could be placed at the end of the gym, and still leave some playground space there, so that's a, a way to gain an additional, what was it, 8 classrooms in total, if all of those moves were to be made. And then there, the longer, shared with you, again, we're adding on, the Glover is the one site now that has the potential for, for a building addition or 2, there's the addition in back, parking would need to be expanded in front, and then playground in that corner of the site maintained there, there's what the plan layout would look like, the, the thing to notice here, again, is, here's the existing school, and, and the corridors, and there is an exit right there, so that, that connection is reasonable, that it connects into the existing corridor system, at this end, however, it, there isn't really a corridor to connect to, except back here, and you'd have to either build a kind of outdoor porch, or, or some additional space, just to make that flow a little bit better, but there's 11 classrooms in a single-story addition, at the other end of the building, there's the possibility of connecting in, as well, and in this case, because it, it flows a little bit better, we did suggest that if a stairwell were placed at either end, and an elevator, that this could perhaps be a, a 2-story addition, it does sort of tie into the circulation pattern, it's right near the entrance there, it's right near the, the central core, you know, elements of cafeteria and, and library, a little bit better than, than the backside, and this shows 9 classrooms on a floor, and therefore, if, if a 2-story addition were built, it could be 18 classrooms, so this would, would sort of, as 18 classrooms kind of minimally satisfy the long-term option, you might say, it falls short of the 25 or 26 classrooms that were identified, and, and again, we'll go through the evaluation of these, but there are certainly significant drawbacks on, on all of these existing sites to adding to the population in these ways. So, at the Collicott-Cunningham site, if we were trying to develop that undeveloped portion of land back there, with a new access off of Pleasant Street, so that we don't, or we sort of minimally impact the traffic on, on the Edgehill Road side of the site, that there's approximately what a 2-story footprint would, would look like, as, that's how large it would need to be to satisfy the 26 classrooms for pre-K and, and kindergarten there, and it would, as I say, be a 2-story building, where you'd enter the upper level, you could make a connection, a pedestrian connection back to the school here, and a lower-level entrance on, on this side of the building, and so, there'd be some grade, re-grading done, and, and retaining walls needed to, to make that kind of a building work there, and there's also the issue of, of some low, possibly wetlands back in here, too, that would need to be dealt with, to make this feasible at all. And at the middle school, we identified a way to add classrooms to that, that perhaps would allow the addition of the 5th grade to the middle school building, it would be a 3-story addition, with a footprint like that, where the, the new road would, would be, you know, swung around here to preserve this field, but, but create a building zone off the backside of the building, it would lay out where it could connect into the existing circulation pattern, there, we'd need to break through and extend a corridor on this side, and this side, build a new stair there, but you could see, you can get 4 classrooms of science, you know, so you can get a, a team space, if, if this space were to be configured like a team, like the rest of the middle school, boys' and girls' rooms, some teacher space, or, or support space as well, and it would, obviously, the existing classrooms here would, would get reconfigured, so one of them, the STEM classroom that's here, could be moved into the new space, to allow that corridor connection, this classroom would remain and, and keep some outdoor exposure to get natural light, as you go on up, the building now, the, the existing building steps back, so these windows aren't impacted necessarily, but again, we need to break through to make that connection into the new addition there, and this is what it would look like, three-dimensionally, we showed you these last week, but, and here's kind of explanation, on the ground floor, the building projects out to here, and we'd butt into that, but on the upper 2 floors, we'd build on top of this roof, to make the connection back to the 2nd and 3rd floor of the existing building, to make a 3-story, 18-classroom addition or so, and that's a net 18 classrooms, so it counts the ones that are displaced, you know, those are made up within the construction there, so it's 18 new classrooms. And then at the high school, we identified a building site, similarly, where by swinging the road out and around, we create a, a building zone here, off the backside of the, the field house, that could house an early ed center, and, and still maintain access into the existing field house, the, this entrance here would be maintained, there'd be a separate entrance for the early ed activities, a separate outdoor play area as well, and this anticipates being a 2-story building, although it's connected only at the first floor, this is a blank wall here of, of the field house, this is what the, the plan would look like, and we did modify this to get 26 classrooms in, so there are 13 on a floor, and it stacks up, the 2nd floor plan is, is similar, these are now 1,000 square feet classrooms, the state standard for, for kindergarten, pre-kindergarten is, is 1,100 to 1,200, and many of your existing kindergarten classrooms are in the range of 1,000 to 1,100, but some of the ones where you've expanded are smaller, there, some are as small as 900, or maybe even slightly less, a couple of them that, you know, used to be 1st grade classrooms, but because of the numbers, had to be converted, so 1 or 2 of them are, are smaller, and each of these rooms, you know, typically would have its own self-contained toilet room here, for each of the rooms, so they're all configured the way kindergarten and, and pre-K rooms should be, so here's, here's that entrance, so there could be a drop-off on this side of the building, a separate entrance adjacent to the, the office space for the, for this early ed center here, with an indoor multipurpose space that could be used for lunch, could also be used for indoor play, there'd be a small warming kitchen here, that could be supported by the main kitchen of the, of the high school, food brought across and, and served here, it, it does have an art and music space as well, and there's that playground space, with access from that point there, it'd obviously be fenced in for safety and separation from the roadways there, and, and as I said, the high school still has somewhat of a plaza over here, and, and a dedicated entrance, obviously, it loses the parking that's back here now, they, they, you know, make use more of the parking that's, that's over here above the fields, but they, there still could be a passageway here, so for high school students that park behind the fieldhouse here, they could the fieldhouse here, they could get through into the school without going through the early ed center. So there'd be clear separation of the two. Here's the second-floor plan. It's basically a repeat of the classrooms, 13 classrooms. And in the center here, there could be an opening in the floor just to give double height to that multipurpose space below, and surrounding it would be the equivalent of a library-media center. It's more, you know, for a kindergarten or early ed center, it has a slightly different character, but it could be developed in that way to be kind of a learning commons. And there's an art room up here, and there's some smaller, small-group spaces, which could get windows on the perimeter there. So there are some special ed resource spaces and a little bit more administrative space up here as well, with a stairway and an elevator and so forth there. So it does seem to fit there, it does seem to work, and we could get 26 classrooms there as a long-term solution. And here's what it would look like three dimensionally, just to see it. There's the passageway that would be maintained. Here's the volume of the fieldhouse. This would be the entrance of the early ed center here with the drop-off. And some of this parking would be dedicated, obviously, to the early ed center. And there's the high school side of it, you might say. This triangular plaza with the entrance, those archways still to enter into the fieldhouse would be maintained. But as we said, the connection is only at the first floor. Up here is really a blank wall of the fieldhouse. There's no connection at the second-floor level. So that, you know, the windows here aren't impacted, and the windows, and it gives opportunity for windows on the new space as well. And there's the potential for a pop-up, clear-story window or something over that indoor play space. And here's just a graphic of a new school, of what it would include. It works out to be about 77,000 square feet, and it would include 26 classrooms, four sections per grade plus two pre-K rooms, some special ed space, obviously, a library-media center, art and music, full-size gym and cafeteria and some administration. Those are the basic programmatic elements. But being a new school on a new site, it would also have these, you know, site elements, some grass-playing fields, some play structures, obviously, parking and drop-off areas. All of that's, you know, required as part of a new school, depending on where the site is. Obviously, the site is to be determined, though there's not one identified as yet as part of this process. So then we just sort of summarized these and put cost to them in a, in sort of an order of magnitude range. The short-term ones are obviously much more modest than the longer-term ones, but they also don't gain as much. We're only talking about, you know, converting five rooms here, or adding three rooms here, or renting eight modulars. So the numbers, the order of magnitude, are significantly different than the 20 or 26 classrooms of the longer term. And note that, you know, there is a difference between construction cost and project cost. Project cost is all-inclusive. It includes the construction cost plus furniture and equipment, plus fees, plus contingencies. So it's sort of the all-in cost for these options. And for the modulators, where you rent them, you don't really own them, we had to, you know, make an assumption that perhaps for, this would be a three-year commitment, and that's why it results in that order of magnitude of around $2 million, 2.4 million, to rent three classrooms, or eight classrooms out of it, for three years. And then likewise, for the longer-term options, we quantified, you know, how much space is involved, and then basically using some rules of thumb about cost of space to either renovate or construct these days, and whether site work was involved or not, you know, calculated the construction cost accordingly. And so you can see it's a range of costs in each case, and project cost does include some escalation. Obviously, these projects wouldn't happen immediately, so they can't be calculated in, you know, $2,019. It's three years out at least, so that's, we did make an estimation of three years' worth of escalation in these numbers. And you can see that, you know, these are fairly significant costs that we're talking about now, up in the 30, all the way up to $50 million range, you know, for the new school being the highest. And as I said, we did adjust the numbers here. You can now see that the new school is clearly the largest, and it has 26 classrooms, but because it has a full-size gym, full-size kitchen, some of the other spaces, and it's also got site work involved, that's why the numbers are significantly more than even adding on at the high school with an early ed center, where only, you might say, 55,000 square feet is needed, and the numbers are, you know, a bit significantly lower than that. So along with your committee and the Facilities Advisory Committee, we started to evaluate these last week, and I know the committee did a good job of tallying that. What we did was just sort of highlight and say, these two options seem to be the short-term options that rose to the top, that received the most support, in terms of, you know, none of them are ideal, we all recognize that. But in terms of what they'd offer, what they'd cost, what they impacted, they seem to be the ones worth considering, that is, converting the remaining art and music rooms and constructing one additional classroom in the library of each of the buildings to gain, you know, it would be a net gain of eight classrooms in the short term there. And then likewise, we did the evaluation of the longer-term options, and what rose to the top there were the, these two options, the addition of an early ed center at the high school site and the new school here. Although, again, there are, you know, significant pros and cons to all of these, but again, sort of by consensus and looking at the pros and cons and the costs and understanding them, these were the two that received the most support of the committee. So I think that's a fair sort of summary of this process of where we're at. So we'll kind of leave it at that, I guess. That's where we are. If I could back up, I guess, leave it on that slide there.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Ken.
That was great.
Thank you.
So what I'd like to do is, if you look at this packet here that Member Rosemarin was nice enough to put together, so this, so now, now that we have sort of a, I think, a robust analysis of our situation and our options, we need to do a couple of different things. We need to start discussing these pros and cons, discussing them with the various stakeholders, both within the MPS and outside the MPS, and start down the process of making some decisions. So what I'd like to do is, I'd like to start talking about some of these pros and cons, and then move our discussion to some of our thoughts on the pros and cons of the short and long-term solutions. And with the understanding that I think a long-term solution will require some significant town-wide discussion about what the best solution is for the town as a whole. But I think that the short-term solution is, the discussions can be much more internal in terms of which path I think we think is best. So I'd like to discuss some of these pros and cons, and then I'd like to move us slightly down the path of short-term and discuss next options regarding the long-term solutions, next steps, if that's amenable to people. But I'm open, I'm open to suggestions if others feel that we should do something different. Okay. So, Member Rosemarin, why don't you walk us through this chart that you put together, which I think is quite helpful?
Well, there's a lot here, and I have to say, I think Carl's presentation really captured the priorities well in his chart, which is in agreement with the evaluations that were done. What we did was reviews of all of the short-term and long-term options by both the Facilities Advisory Committee and by the District Leadership Team, two different times. And each of those groups evaluated the short-term and the long-term options, and we have them all in one place here. You know, as you go through the short-term options, as you can see, doing nothing was not very popular. Converting all the remaining art and music and computer rooms was seen as a cost-effective and a low-cost option, but it's still, you know, affects the art and music programs for three to five years for elementary students, and that's a problem and a concern, and as well impacts the, well, this doesn't get into the library, that's the next short-term option. But similarly, it was a relatively low-cost option, but it does have an impact on the size of the library space available for all of our students. And that's something serious to be considered. Moving on, the Cunningham fourth floor, you know, I think it was something that rose to the top early on when we were talking, but I think the reality, when we really learned about, that we could get about three classrooms out of it, and what it would cost to do it, it really fell way down in the priorities that, and not to mention bringing students up to the fourth floor and who could be up there, and the possibility of switching that up with the Cunningham-Collicott Library, and none of those options seemed to be favorable from the groups that reviewed those. Renting the modular classrooms are quite expensive, as we see. One of the suggestions that I think a number of us were amenable to was that we could conceivably put our art and music classes in the portable classroom, so that children wouldn't spend the whole day in a portable classroom, they would go out to one of the portable classrooms for art and/or music. So that was seen as one way to not affect one class who spends the whole day out in the portable classroom. But clearly, the loss of outdoor play space was an issue, especially at Cunningham-Collicott that has hundreds of kids out in the playground during recess, and that was seen as a problem. And then last was renting and renovating space if available, and the Facilities Advisory Committee is continuing to explore those options around town. We haven't got one to bring to you today, but we're circling back with people who said no to us once before, and just to be sure that something might not be available now. But that, we're still hopeful, and that could alleviate some of the space crunch in the building, that if we could free up a handful of classrooms with the rentals. So, I don't know, do you want me to go through the long-term options now, or?
Maybe.
Just in short-term, yeah.
Sure. Very great. So let's talk about some of these short-term options. And as I said, you know, I think, frankly, I think frankly, as the school committee, we have a lot more leeway in coming up with what we think are the best short-term options, and, for lack of a better term, having, bringing the town along with us. But I think for the long-term solutions, we definitely need, there definitely needs to be more discussion town-wide. So amongst ourselves, let's talk about some of these short-term options and what our thoughts are and where we are in this evaluation process.
Excuse me, one second.
Yes, a second.
I just wonder if we could just change that slide to the short-term options, which I think it was just really helpful to see these highlighted, as, you know, converting and constructing, you know, converting art, music, computer rooms, and constructing the one classroom out of three libraries as being things that sort of rose to the top in terms of options, and just wanted to.
Thank you. Nope. Excellent idea. Dr. Crick, and do you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a few things. One is just really a question about Cunningham fourth floor. We had been, I think, led to believe at some point that we would get four or possibly five classrooms out of there. How did that end up three? Could you just take us through that?
Well, we did look at the floor plans, and, I'm sorry, I don't have the sketch of it, but quickly did a sketch to understand getting a corridor to connect to the two stairways, which would be required, to make sure there were two ways out from up there for those students, using some of the space for boys' and girls' rooms that should be on that same floor. And then just with the configuration of all the dormers, that square footage is a little tricky to calculate, but we made sure that the rectangular portion of the classroom sort of met the standard size. So it might be that if you did it just purely on the numbers and said, well, we've got, I forget what it is, but say, you know, 3,000 square feet of space, and we divide it by, you know, an 850-square-foot classroom, we should get four, the math says. Well, the reality is, like we said, the dormers don't really add to the usable square footage. They, you know, they go in and out in a sawtooth fashion. And when we laid it out, three was really the reasonable layout.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say that I'm glad that renting the modular classrooms is not one of the ones that rose to the top, because after we rent them for three years at a cost of potentially close to $2.5 million, we don't own them, we've just used them for three years, and we have sort of nothing to show for that. And in the meantime, after putting all that money out, we've lost that outdoor play space as well. So I personally wouldn't be in favor of that. On the other hand, and I know all of these solutions are not great, they're not. On the other hand, carving out those libraries, as I said in our last meeting, one of the libraries looked like it might be an option that wouldn't reduce the library space, so much so that it would be detrimental, but the rest of them just look like to me that they are, that they're not good options when we're considering student use of those spaces. It's just they become too small, too tight, and not conducive to, to sort of a pleasant experience for the students, to put it bluntly.
Yeah. And I'll continue to look to my left, because the three of us were at the Facilities Advisory Committee, so I don't know anything else.
So my, for the short term, my two cents are, first, I'm going to echo what Dr. Crick had said, that, you know, we have to go in knowing that there is going to be cons to everything, right? But because we have, are going to have to do a short-term and a long-term, I would favor the more inexpensive for the short-term, when the long-term is going to be what we're left with, and we're going to have to, you know, gain, yeah, we're going to have to gain the input and, the input, you know, and evaluation of the town in general. I'm both short and long, because, again, it's all about the money. So I favor either doing, taking away the art and the music classrooms for three years or the libraries, because, because I don't, the modular, everything that Dr. Crick said about modular, I agree with, especially the space, the space. about modular, I agree with, especially the space, the space that it would take up to pre-play for recess, which is really, really important. And I just don't think we should spend the money on the classrooms up at Cunningham, especially, I think, when it's, with the whole situation of that fourth floor, and whether it would be approved. And again, as a parent, I know I say this, but as a parent whose child lived through the 1909 wing, and horrific, horrific building space, and was still happy as a clam, they will survive for three years with art in a cart, and music on a cart, or a smaller library, and they will be just fine. Not ideal, short-term, but many of our kids did it for several years, and then moved into their new buildings for the rest of their journey, they will be fine.
Ms. Rosemary.
Carl, I wonder if you might be able to comment on the library size after classrooms are taken out of them, in terms of the different libraries that are under consideration for that. And I don't know if there's a rule of thumb in terms of size library, and how many kids can fit in, and that kind of thing.
The schools were built, or the libraries, rather, were built, when the schools were renovated, to meet the standards at the time, and they haven't changed that much, the standards haven't changed. So obviously, as the enrollment goes up, the library becomes a little bit substandard proportionally, but the sort of opposing point of view might be that the technology has changed the nature of libraries, even at the elementary level, where information is, you know, so readily available online, there's not as much reliance on books, although of course, especially young readers and things, that they still, to a great deal, want and utilize books, picture books, as well as, you know, young adult books and so forth. So, but there has been a trend to reduce the number of books, and the amount of stacks therefore needed, so that helps a little bit ease the pressure as the enrollment grows and the library doesn't grow with it. But no doubt, you know, carving out a full-size classroom out of each library, as was noted, will certainly be felt. I don't know exactly how the libraries are currently used in terms of the numbers of classes that could go there, but they're each sized currently that two classes could be there at the same time, you know, with their teacher, with the librarian. That may not be the case in the future, if you were to carve out one library, it would be too crowded, and they'd be on top of each other, and you wouldn't really be able to have two separate classes there at the same time. So it would affect that kind of access to the library, perhaps.
And again, just like, excuse me, just like the art and a cart or music experience for three years is temporary, with the idea that we get back the music and art rooms after this construction, or whatever we do happens, I think the same thing with the libraries, I think that building a classroom, taking some space away temporarily, and then we can revert it back to its original purpose three years from now. So again, it's not going to be a permanent change, it can be a wall build and then a reconfiguration after the fact.
But it feels, I know I'm probably speaking out of order, but it feels permanent. How, what's the cost of converting those rooms back into library spaces? Is it the same?
It'd be similar, similar, maybe a little less, you know, depending on the condition of the finishes and all, but you could literally build a wall, it's like, it's sort of like office space, where you build a wall right on top of the carpet that's there, up to the ceiling, make it tight, make it soundproof, you have to rearrange the lights, so when you take down the wall, the carpet's still there, the, you know, you, in essence, repair the ceiling from where the wall connected to it, that sort of thing. So it's reversible. The ventilation system would have to be modified, but once that's modified, you really don't have to undo that. So it might be a little bit less in the future to revert it back than it costs to construct it now.
Yeah. And, you know, just to make a comment on that, when you think about the fact that elementary school students spend most of their day in their classroom with their homeroom teacher, I prefer that that space be the ideal space, even, because they only go to the library once a week, sometimes twice a week, depending on what else is going on, so even if they're, the library's not ideal for that period, small period of time where we're under construction, I would prefer that the classroom be the preferred space or the more ideal space.
Dr. Crick.
I think we're never going to get these spaces back when we convert them. You know, I'm willing to go along with what everybody wants to do here, I really am. We, space is at a premium, but I will just say that, you know, with the new development that's going up on Randolph Avenue that's been approved for 90 units, we're going to see more and more and more, and all the rest of the development in town, we're going to see more and more and more pressure on these schools, and if we manage to build something with 26 classrooms that right now is predicting what we're going to need, we're going to need even more, and I don't think we're going to see these return. I know it's supposedly temporary and short-term, but I bet it's not.
Ms. Rosemary.
Well, I don't agree with that. I think that if, you know, if we were committed to returning and restoring the libraries to be able to be what they were originally built for, that we should be able to do that. The projections in enrollment, sure, don't, haven't considered the 40B projects that are down the road, but the, and we don't know the numbers of children that might be part of those, but in the scheme of the enrollment projections, I don't think it's going to be hundreds that are going to cause us to make these be permanent. The other, the other point that I wanted to make, too, about library space being reduced is, I know in kindergartens, because those are the ones I know the most, have their own classroom libraries of books, and children use those a lot, and, you know, could we potentially during a time when the library is constricted, take some of those books that were in the library and put them in classrooms that are appropriate for age levels? That may be a way to continue to have books in children's lives during that time, and maybe even more readily available to them if they're in their classroom. Just a thought.
I guess I don't, I mean, I see what Elaine is saying about, you know, libraries, and I, but I don't see, we don't have a whole lot of options here.
Right.
Unfortunately, because we don't want to do the modular renting classroom space, because we don't want to take away outdoor space, that we don't have enough of to begin with. We can't take away the cafeteria, because that's already, you know, the having lunch early, you know, it just, there's not enough time even to schedule all the lunches that people probably need in a day. We've already sort of taken away art and music in several spaces, so, I mean, unfortunately, this, you know, yeah, we could do nothing, which is not the option that anyone chose, and make classes get bigger, and, but, I mean, I'm assuming that, if I counted correctly, that doing all those conversions would give us eight spaces, is that right? Two at Glover, no, three at Glover, I think two at Cunningham, two at Collicott, and two at Tucker? If I counted properly?
There's five art, music, and computer classrooms, and then doing the classrooms in the library would be three, so that's eight.
Eight total.
I mean, and you know, Tucker's already tight, and so with Collicott, Cunningham, and Glover, even though they're much more, they're much larger spaces. I just, I mean, those are just the only short-term options that I can see, because none of us want to rent modular classrooms unless we found a space in town, unless we were lucky or fortunate enough.
And I promise you, I'm still working on that.
I know, I know.
I was on the phone today.
It would, it would cost money to rent, that would cost more, I don't know, it might be comparable to the short-term options of those conversions, but that would, that would be ideal. That would truly be ideal. And then we would have a little breathing room to do the long-term solution, and not stress out already stressed-out things. Because I feel badly, even, I'm just thinking about when we were having all those site council presentations at finance, when we talked about when it rains, and there's, like, the idea that there's not enough spaces to go already, and, you know, the library is at least a space where you can go, and it's used not just by classrooms, but for, you know, before-school activities and after-school activities, and enrichment programs, I mean, it's not just the library, so it's like a community center library, so it's just hard to, you know, so then we're just taking away more, any, you know, free space, we're just, because we don't have any other choice. I, yeah, I really don't know, I just.
Ms. Rosemary.
Yeah, I wonder if Mary might be able to speak to how the libraries are used now? Are they, do they schedule more than one class in the library at a time at this point?
The students have a library class, and on the off-week, they go to library with their teacher and return their books, and there's a paraprofessional there. The library's used, to member Abahat's remark, before and after school, future problem-solving. In the, we have crept into the edges of the libraries with some classes for early English-language learners, or many of our service providers don't have offices or spaces, and so if you go into Cunningham, you know, I asked a few weeks ago, what is this over here? Well, this is where that person hangs their hat. And then they move into different classes for inclusion, but there really isn't office space. And so at the Glover, to Carl Franceschi's point, half of the Glover library was a computer lab, so we took it down, and we have the carts there of the Chromebooks, and sometimes a class will come there and set up the Chromebooks, or there'll be a teacher who wants to access, you encourage teachers to access the library, you know, if they want to use the library. At the Cunningham Collicott, you could do that, to Carl's point, you can have more than one class. At the Glover, tight, but two classes of function. At the Tucker, only one class can go in the library at a time. But remember, Veralla had asked what the plan was for next year. So for this coming year, we talked about, there's a fifth grade rolling off we talk about at the Glover, so you understand that the buildings are built for 14 kindergartens, and we've been running 16 for.
Four years. Three years.
And so the 15th kindergarten next year will go to Glover, and the 16th, our plans are to take the teacher's room, which is one of your rooms you've identified, at the Cunningham, and we have Bill Ritchie measuring out space. We have the community schools offices now, I don't know where I'd put them, but they would move the teacher's room into the community service office, and then that would eliminate any space for the next year at Cunningham Collicott. And if 17, based on the NESDEC projections come up, we'll be taking the Tucker teacher's room inside, and there's a small space on the second and third floor. And so that would leave us, at the Tucker, they have one room that they share for art and music, kindergarten, first graders have art and music at the classroom. Collicott Cunningham share three windowless rooms, and most of the kindergartens and first grades are in the classroom for art and music. And Glover, they're out of the art room now, that's a classroom, but they still have the music room, and really a half-classroom for art, which they can go into with the furniture that they use. So that's our plan for this coming year, and we'll know within the month our kindergarten enrollment. But all of the rooms that Carl has identified would have to then be used the next year, and a combination of the making rooms in the library.
So, I'll add my two cents as well as we move through the conversation. I, from a, from a cost perspective, I think the converting, continuing to convert rooms is very attractive, and similarly, from a cost perspective, building the three new rooms in the libraries is also a very attractive option. I really like the option, from a program perspective, of building the classrooms on the top floor of Cunningham, because it nets you classrooms without taking current function space, but, you know, I look at the cost, and for, for 1.3 million, you know, that's, you know, that's a lot, that's a lot of money. I mean, when we get to the long-term options, that's not a lot of money, but it's a lot of money, and I would, I would rather, rather skimp on the short-term, and put that money toward the long-term solution, at the expense of, at the expense of our, some of our programs for a couple of years.
And just to piggyback on what member White said, I, again, in its short-term, they do spend, it's true, they do spend the bulk of their day, you know, in that classroom, and I, I think that if that, you know, if that's a nicer space, it really is the most important, and that they would have to, you know, have a less ideal media space and, you know, size-wise, but I think all of what everyone said's made a lot of sense, and especially the cost aspect of it.
So, I'm sorry, I started talking, I didn't look up, see if you guys wanted to. So, thinking about how things fall, and from a budgeting perspective, it seems like, yeah, so, well, let me back up a step. I think if we're, if we're looking for capital money to expend on one of these options, we're sort of well into the planning phase for the next, we're almost to the end of the planning phase for the next fiscal year, so we're talking about the following fiscal year, which I think is fiscal year '21. So fiscal year '21, which lines up with academic year 2021. So, we're not going to be getting any money in April to do any work over the summer, so we'd be talking about next April for, next summer, for the fall of '20, and into So as we, as we start to think about our short-term plan, it seems as though we're sort of coalescing around continuing, and some grouping thereof, continuing to convert classrooms, some limited construction, whether it's in the libraries or on the third floor of Cunningham, fourth floor of Cunningham, and/or finding rental space if we can somewhere, and/or class-size growth. But, but that's, that's, again, that's not my opinion, that's, that seems, that's what I'm getting in, but, and if that's incorrect, please, please correct me.
I mean, either way, we're, I mean, we're going to have 16 again next year, and if, please, no, 17, we're losing, next year, those spaces are being used for classrooms, the ones that you identified. So that's going to happen, regardless, something's going to happen, because we're rolling up a grade, and we're probably going to enroll another 16, so those things will happen, no matter what, because we, you couldn't make any classroom increase size, that number, a whole class, somewhere, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Can I ask a question about the rentals? Sorry, Dr. White. So if we were to miraculously find something.
Miraculous is the word.
Someone calmly found us some space, we'd have to think about, so we haven't considered that, as we've discussed, that's not part of the fiscal year '20 budget consideration as of this point. I mean, these other things are, you know, the minimal conversion cost for next year, the following year might be more, but for next year, it's just a matter of space.
I, I think, I think the same might be true, if, again, if we found rental space, we're, we're well into the budgeting process for fiscal year '20, academic year 1920, so if, if we were to, if we were to find something, we would, if we were to find something and we wanted to use it for fall of '19, we would, that money would effectively have to come out of our operating budget, because that's where we are in the planning phase, it's sort of unfair to the town to throw that at them now. But if we're talking about the following fall, then that can be brought into the capital planning discussion for, for the next budget year, which, you know, which frankly has already begun, because of the fire station and the other related events, there's a lot for capital year '20 that got moved into '21. So that discussion's already happening, so. Does that, I, I think that answers your question. Because I think your question was, how do we, how do we jump on that? And the answer is, if, if it becomes available and we need it for, we want it for next fall, we have to pay for it out of our operating budget. But if, if we're talking the year after, there, there might be some room in the capital budget to pursue it. Member White?
And I know that we've, when we've had some preliminary discussions with some, some folks in town, you know, we don't really know what they have available, if they have anything available. So we can't even discuss what the rental or lease would be, if we don't know what's available or the square footage. So we're sort of waiting on people to get back to us and waiting to meet with some folks to see if it's possible. And then we go to the next step, which is bringing it back to administration to say, this is what they have available and what would be the next steps for anything. Premature.
So, okay, so I think, I think this was very productive. I know, member Verella has been, one of your issues has been, you know, what's, what's the short-term plan? What's the short-term plan? So I feel, I feel good that we're sort of on our way to developing the short-term plan. So I, I think, you know, obviously continuing to convert classrooms as well within our capacity and our abilities. If we're talking about, you know, construction of, of classrooms inside the libraries, that, that might be or, or not, but as the capital discussion continues, we will have to include that. And same with renting, I think if, if something materializes and we sort of have an idea of cost, we can insert that into the capital discussion. And if, if not, then, then not. And if we're talking class size, we're, we're probably going to have to talk operationally about staffing levels. And if we're adequate, you know, to, to manage the staffing levels. So, member Rosemary?
I just want to be sure that people understand, if we're talking about proceeding with the combination of converting art and music classrooms and building classrooms in libraries for the short term, that that nets us five rooms out of the needed 19 extra. So it does, it, it's sort of combining those two, converting and constructing, with the option of doing nothing. And essentially, it, it leaves us still dealing with some increases in class size at the same time.
Yeah, so, and that's an excellent point. So unless, unless we are, unless we're willing to seriously talk about renting modulars or, and again, we've looked into renting, and if the space isn't available, it's not available. So that, that means that we will, we will end up, at, at some point on this spectrum, increasing class size to accommodate those class numbers while we, while we pursue.
To the best of our ability. And it's, you know, we're trying to do the best we can for as little as we can, with the town's money, for the short term.
Carl had the numbers, right? Remember the last time he showed us some of the numbers? Like if we did nothing, this would be a.
Oh, yes.
An average increase.
Yeah.
Not accounting for the cotots and smaller classes like that, but it would alleviate some of it.
I was going to point out, I, I think I heard you say five.
It's eight, right?
I think it's eight, if you did both.
You did both.
If you did both, it would be eight additional classes.
Five and three, pardon me, it's eight.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which is, you know, roughly, you might say, half the need. So the increase in average class size might be half a student from 22 to 22.5.
Right, right, thank you.
And there's one other issue that we've discussed with Carl, and it's hard to put in a presentation like this. Your schools look very different today than they did 10 years ago in the way of classrooms for children with special needs and special programs. So again, we had over 100 students in out-of-district, sped out-of-district placements before the school building project. With the commitment from the school committee and the town, and the will of the people, and building programs, having families go and see out-of-district placements and see our programs, we've brought that down to 53. So it's very hard to factor in, you know, to anticipate. But what it will do is, this plan will literally stop any creation of more special ed programming that can bring children out of, out of district placements. Or what happens, you'll identify, the children change every year. You know, you have three children out of district who all have the same need. You start to build a program for three or four children. You know, again, it's multi-year, but it will, if we don't have room, we can't plan. You know, again, children with emotional needs, you know, thriving, actually moving out of the program at the Glover. The cotot strands that have children that would have been out of district. The children with developmental delays at the Cunningham programming. And then the school committee voted this partners in neck program at the Cunningham, at the Collycut. Children are in that program that would be driving an hour each way, each day. And we've partnered with the New England Center for Children. And we run that program at the Collycut. All of the children in that program would be going to itself.
Marlboro.
Marlboro, for the program. So we've talked about that. I don't know how you, if you're getting the full picture, it will stop any planning of programs, because there's, there will be no room.
Yeah.
And usually you stop those programs at the elementary, and then you move them up through the middle and high.
But you're saying beyond what we already have.
Exactly.
We couldn't add anything.
Right.
While we're doing this.
Right, it's a little asterisk on it. That it will stop, because.
But it won't stop what we have, it, we just can't.
But you voted next year, that language-based teacher in your sped. You know, we found a room at Pierce to build that program. So it, it has been continual building these programs. It's just an asterisk that if we didn't share it, no, nothing's going to change. Good point, member Verella. Nothing's going to change for what we have, but it will stop the planning for what we would have built. You know, these principals are, and sped director are anxious to build programs, but that has to stop. Just for, during this time.
Member Rosemary?
But, but Mary, if we then go with one of our long-term options and building 26th classrooms somewhere to accommodate our children, that will free up space to.
Absolutely.
Build these programs as well.
Go back to expanding and building.
It will eventually save the town money.
Yes.
By bringing those kids back into town.
No.
Substantial amount of money.
All you have to do is, you know, have any association with the public schools, and everybody understands that. And on top of it, these families want their children in their neighborhood schools and not taking these drives to private placements. And they're thriving in the public schools and with their neighbors. And if you walk through a public school, which we invite any resident, you'll see the experiences that children have.
Important point.
Thank you. No, that's, that's an excellent point, because that is, that's one way that we look to save money year to year, is who can, what programs can we build to bring students back into the MPS, in our district placements? Okay, thank you. So, so moving on to our long-term options. Again, Carl, if you wouldn't mind flipping us, thank you. So here, here I'll, I'll insert the caveat that, as I've said before, that we, we are doing a lot of the legwork and the lead work, but obviously this is, this is going to have to be a town-wide decision. You know, we, we obviously have a very loud voice in that conversation for a number of reasons. But it is, it will have to be a community decision, and we'll have to engage with a number of the stakeholders in the community outside of, of us and outside of our facilities advisory committee. But that said, I think this is a good term, good time to take our first pass at discussing these options with, with I think some very concrete costs associated with them. So, so with that, I'll, I'll open the floor to people who have comments or questions. And again, I'll, the, the three of us were on the advisory committee, so if members to my left have something they want to, if they want to start the conversation, I'll crack it. I'm sorry, member Rosemary?
Just wondering, do you want me to run through the, the review of the other committees? And then happy to turn it over.
Yes, please, why don't you run through the options?
So on your charts here, and again, it's very aligned with what Carl has highlighted here, as you'll see. But long-term option A, doing nothing, did not receive a lot of positive reviews. Long-term option B of converting all remaining art, music, computer rooms and libraries for a long-term, also not favorable reviews across all the committees. Option C, a long-term addition to existing Glover School. And I think in this, this review, they were considering both the option in the front of Glover School and the back of Glover School. And the, there, there weren't a lot of positives found. It would, other than it would gain classroom space, and the fact that Glover has more land than, than others. It does provide a district-wide solution, the, the two-floor addition does. Although not completely approach our need, because I think the long-term need was 25. 26, and this is 18, so, so it's not quite. And as you can see on the negative side, the, the leadership team really had quite a bit to say about the, the issues about too many students on one site, connecting corridors is awkward. You know, cutting into play space, parking being a challenge, issues of proximity to the brook. Access and traffic would increase, be increasingly difficult. And as we all know, traffic is already a challenge at that, at that site. So that's, that was the review of the Glover School options. Option D, long-term fifth grade addition to Pierce. I've spoken to, I think, all three of us, school committee members that were on facilities. Each went in kind of in our own minds, thinking that was our first choice, and then changed our minds. It was, I'm just telling, telling it like it is. But the, you know, the positive was that it, it leaves the number of school transitions for students the same that, you know, elementary, middle and high school. There was confidence in Karen Spalding that she could make this happen. It saves on administrative space compared to a, a whole new school. And leverages existing infrastructure. On the negative side, you know, the 13 to 1400 students on that tight site could be challenging. And, you know, is the relocation of the fifth grade to, up to the middle school educationally desirable? Again, transportation issues. And, you know, the question about what, that was bandied around, it was, what, what is a fifth grade at this point? Is it still an elementary grade, or has it become a middle school grade? Is it, you know, teach kids in classrooms all day with one teacher? Or do they start moving around like middle schoolers? That, that was not answered. And, and there was questions raised by PTO president's group that Mary and I met with the other day about certification for those teachers, does that change? You know, there are a lot, a lot of questions, and not, not as many answers. And parents' concerns about contact with older middle schoolers. Parking would be tight. The site is already on a state highway where there are challenges with traffic. So, you know, that's sort of the highlights of the pros and cons for that.
May I just add one thing?
Yeah.
I thought it was interesting, this one, in the facilities subcommittee, Tony Cuccello said, and the principal said, the gym is at 100% usage now in the cap. So by doing this, you're presenting a whole nother set of issues for introducing 350 children on that site for facilities.
Of the core facilities, yeah, yeah, thank you, Mary, I forgot about that one. So option D1, long-term plan for early childhood center behind Cunningham Collycut. Again, you know, resources for early childhood would be in one place. Provides a district-wide solution with one constructive, construction project. Special ed and early intervention support at one site. Administrative costs may be less if administrators oversee two buildings at the same time. Could have a warming kitchen versus a full kitchen. It could build special ed programs there. Were some of the things on the pro side and on the con.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I, I just wanted to add into that, one of the comments that I made about the neighborhood schools and walkers versus riders and things, that would be somewhat mitigated if you did it here. So I would consider that a pro.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay. And then on the con side, concern about neighborhood issues and traffic. I mean, traffic is already an issue at Cunningham Collycut. Even though access would come in from Pleasant Street, it's still of high volume. And would increase the number of students at that site to, there's an estimate here of 1,800. I don't know what it is now, is 1,300 now?
1,300 now.
So it'd be 400, 450 more, yeah, so it is, you know, it's a lot, it's a lot of students. So that was, those were the reviews of that. Option E was early ed addition at Milton High School, behind the Mac Milton High School. Again, the positives were access to the high school kitchen, option for a sufficient number of rooms, no loss of neighborhood school for French. I'm not exactly sure what that means, some of these comments.
That, that referred to the fact that if you, because of our lottery system, we, year to year, have one to two families that are in kindergarten at Cunningham and end up in French at Tucker. And that would not be the case, because they would be a kindergarten in one spot.
And wherever they go, they get assigned.
They just get, right, so there's no.
Yeah, yeah. Good use of underutilized land that is flat, buildable, we own the land already. Infrastructure could handle food services. It's seen as the least disruptive addition. It does provide a district-wide solution with one construction project. It enhances opportunities for Milton High School students participating in the child study program. I know Ben Kelly, who's on our facilities advisory committee, was excited about that possibility. And the, one of the big pros that, that I think was a big part that swayed me on this was the, the ability to stagger school start times and traffic on the site. That would be only possible with this addition. That the high school starts so early that this preschool kindergarten wing could start later. And when every, high school was all done and things were quiet. So, so that was, that was a big one. Some of the cons on that, the parking would be a little closer to the adjoining neighborhood. Concerns about overloads on the site. concerns about overloads on the site, there was a concern mentioned that means, would mean there are no improvements for Pierce Middle School, this affects the elementary school and the high school, but doesn't do anything at Pierce.
I'm sorry, I'm not, can you explain that a little more? I don't really understand that.
Yeah, well, you know, the high school, I think the high school would benefit from having the early ed wing by the use of the child study. Students would have access to all of these classrooms nearby and enhances that program. It would free up one more classroom in the high school if the child study class actually is moved to the wing, and it certainly frees up the vast majority of the classrooms free up space in the elementary schools, but in terms of Pierce, this addition doesn't really have an impact.
No change.
Yeah, yeah, so that was, I think, the thinking. I mean, I'm speaking for somebody else who wrote that particular comment, but I think that was my understanding of it.
I think that sort of touches on the fact that, you know, Pierce is running at 100% capacity, i.e. the lunchroom is full.
Yeah.
And if we did do, like, for example, the fifth grade wing at Pierce, even though we haven't talked about it, that we would probably have to do something with the core facilities to increase them, and that would alleviate some of that pressure as well. So, I think that was sort of all wrapped up in that particular comment.
But DRA didn't put-
Yeah.
That was not included in the cost.
No, they didn't, so that's, again, thank you for your fidelity to the people in the various committees, but that may not be the best item there on the list.
Yeah, yeah. Let's just see. I think those are kind of the highlights.
Yeah.
And then, is F, no, it keeps going. Oh, F and G are both freestanding, so freestanding early ed building is F, and again, no identified site available, and the long-term, that long-term cost is more than building on the back of the high school, but it does provide a district-wide solution in one construction project, and similarly, I think there's similar feeling about the freestanding K to five school, in a lot of ways, it, how to, you know, it's the most flexible long-term solution in terms of taking all grades out of the elementary school program, maintaining the current grade configurations, and it is a district-wide solution, but the big challenge there is that we don't have a site, and the money cost in acquiring a site is, you know, adds to the cost, and the cost of a long-term site is substantially the most expensive of all the projects, so.
Thank you. So, I'll go back to my earlier comment, I don't know if anyone has, wants to open the floor on our discussion about these long-term options. Dr. Craighead, thank you.
Well, unlike my maverick opinions on the short-term options, I am totally in accordance with the early ed center as being, at the high school, being the top option for me. It does basically the same thing, that is, provides a 26-classroom building as it would the new K to five school for which we don't even have a site, at a reduced cost of about 20 million from that. I know it will affect, to some extent, parking and traffic and patterns, et cetera, but I think of the options that we've been shown, it's by far the best. I think that the middle school addition is just too much pressure on a really tight space, and as someone who deals with the traffic situation at Glover on a daily basis, I can't imagine putting anything else on that site without drastically reworking what the parking and flow for pickup and drop-off situation is, and I'm not sure it's possible with the little bit of extra space they might have to work with at that site. So, I agree with the early ed at High School, I think it's a great option.
Remember, Rella.
Yeah, I'm going to echo that, I think that cost-wise, it, number one, makes the most sense, and, you know, the classrooms we get, and again, the traffic flow, right, that's our biggest problem in town, there's no space, there's no space to build and no space to move. So, I'm going to echo that, both the issues at Glover, it's the same thing for the freestanding early ed at Cunningham and Collicott, just could not handle it, no way, no how, and it's going to be starting roughly around the same time, so I think that those are just off the charts, and I know that in the consensus of the facilities, it would be early ed than the new K-five school, I just, I just don't think that's, unless some, miracle of miracles, something happens, like, it just shouldn't even be on the table, because we don't have a, there's no space, and, I mean, I don't know, I mean, and then even if, even if it did, right, which I don't know, unless some really wealthy person gives their estate to us, like, in the next five years, or some wave of want, you know, it's just off the table, as far as, you know, I know this is going to have to move in and all of the input, buy-in from the town, I just don't even see how we could even get them to agree to it with the other issues that are going on in town. So, and I get, I get that the fifth, all the things that were said about fifth grade, totally get it, but early ed and fifth grade are one and two for me, as far as the only options that are fairly doable.
Yeah, I would have to build on that statement as well, I think that the early education center, there are clear positives there in terms of cost per square foot, and with the square footage we're building, fixing our classroom, number of classrooms issues. As you said, the fifth grade addition at the middle school, that also, I mean, we're talking about the same thing, if you pull an entire grade out of the elementary schools, that fixes, quote-unquote, fixes the problem, but the early ed center has the added benefit that you're pulling out the kindergartens and the pre-Ks, and that, by pulling out those additional eight some odd classrooms, that gives you more flexibility. That's, that's, that is more expensive, if you put the fifth grade addition on the middle school, you would, you would have to do something to the core facilities, the gym and the cafeteria as well, so there's that as well. Back to Dr. Craighead's earlier point about the short-term options and the libraries and putting classrooms in there, I think the one benefit that the K-five school has is that it, you know, the problem is we have too many elementary students, it's just a very straightforward fix to that, we're building another elementary school for them. It is phenomenally expensive relative to others, and as people pointed out, we don't have a space for it, so while it, programmatically to my mind, fixes a lot of the problems, the best, there are significant drawbacks that I think, as I keep saying, this has to be town-wide decision, town-wide decision, that is, a town-wide decision makes it drop-
Way down.
Way down, yeah. So, remember, Eberhard.
I'd like to also say, I love the idea of the early ed center at the high school for lots of reasons. First of all, it's a really beautiful-looking design, and the idea of the space and the way it looks for young children is nice. Yeah, I love the idea of expanding the opportunities for high school students to learn more about education and becoming certified from the Department of Early Educational Care before they even leave high school. As a teacher certification, you can get a job, and that, you know, that's a wonderful opportunity. And there's also the possibility that if enrollment were to change, and you had less kindergartens, you could then grow the preschool and expand it, and since currently preschool is not universal, and it is a tuition-based program, it would give you options of having a tuition-based program in a space, and you could, you could grow, you know, we have a waiting list at the Tucker of over 50-plus children for preschool, so, you know, that, you could grow that easily, if kindergarten, like, if eventually enrollments, you know, went down a bit, you could grow the preschool, and you could put more programs in there just in general. So, it provides that flexibility for the future as well.
Of course.
Of course, you know, you could grow the preschool, and then enrollment could go up, and then we'll start again, but that will be someone else's problem from a long time. But I do think that it really provides the most flexibility for us as a town, financially too, that you could actually have some options, where the enrollment to go down slightly, you could grow the preschool, and expand it to a full-day program, have a more inclusive, like, not have it be so, like, separate, build a more inclusive program. Those are my thoughts about it, so.
Remember, Rosemarin.
Yeah, one, as, as Member Eberhard was talking, just thinking that, you know, we're so busy doing all the work on facilities, it's easy to take off the other hats that we wear, and, you know, putting on the hat of an early childhood specialist, which we both are. This would be a fabulous place to work, and it would only enhance our early childhood program in Milton Public Schools, to have all of the kindergarten teachers and the preschool teachers in the same building, the collaboration and creativity and enhancement of the program that would come from that, it would just, you know, it's already fabulous, but it would become even more so.
And even just getting to know the kids part, you know, as young children, before they venture out to the next level, it would provide a different sort of accessibility to that for educators. You know, it's different, it's a different concept that you don't go to the other schools of kindergarten, I mean, I know in Dedden they have an early childhood center, I don't have, they just made a beautiful one.
They just built a brand-new one, yeah.
I don't have as much experience with that, combined kindergarten, preschool, I know it works for a lot of places, and I know a lot of districts talk about it more now, but, and I see, for me, I just think in the corn you see out of that, that you have a first-day picture, and then you go circle full all the way to a 12th grader.
Yeah, interesting.
You know, that's just like, if you stay, right, that first day, last day, over the spectrum of all those years, it's a nice thought.
Remember, Rella.
I have two questions about, I just forgot that I wanted to ask about, if it was discussed that. Number one, with early intervention, if everything is at one site, I mean, you know, I know it's both, but isn't that a good cost containment in the sense that more time on task, because all your teachers are at the school, so they're going to be able to see more students, as opposed to traveling, you know, than if we had a fifth school, you know, through all the schools, getting through the town, so, you know, having them there.
Yeah.
And, like you say, even like with the co-taught and all that, but having everyone there that even to rearrange classrooms, and it's, if we need to rework things, having all the early eds there, I just think that that is a pro. And then the other thing I wanted to ask, just to say, to build on the early education program that we have at the high school, I wonder, I mean, I do know some kids who were in that and then went on to definitely teach, but, you know, I know, again, for the years that I taught, all the years that I taught at NSC School of Dance, you know, they have two or three, we call it, I mean, two classes, dance classes for children with special needs, right, special needs, and so in those classes, they're, every child gets one-on-one, so every, like, high school student from, it's starting eighth grade on, they become an aide to them, and they go through training, we bring somebody, they bring someone in who is, who volunteers, which is nice, to put the curriculum together than one of the dance teachers. I have to say, in the 10 years I was there, half of the kids that did the program went on to be a special ed major at school, and they never would have thought that they would have done that, had they not participated in that program. I mean, I couldn't get over the number of kids that they would leave and they would tell me, I'm going to major in special ed, special ed, special ed, and it was, it was all the years of working with those kids and gaining the knowledge of that, so I just didn't know, you know, even more of that here.
The limitless possibilities.
Yeah, the possibilities, and, you know, even I know when we talk about, when we talk about recruitment of teachers, and you all speak to not enough people going to it, especially when we want more people of color and more diverse backgrounds.
Exactly.
All of that can add to, like, putting that little tickler in their brain of, they might never have thought of going into it had they not been exposed to it, so.
Last one.
You.
So, I'm just going to add that I'm also, first choice for me is also the early childhood center at the high school site, and I would only want to revisit the new site for a new school, K through five, if a donor came forward with a, like, four or five acres of land that they wanted to donate and-
And some money too.
-get a tax write-off or whatever.
Get some money.
Then we could revisit that.
And I know we say this in jest, but with all the, with the discussion at, for counterparts on the select board, and the fire station, and they're getting a significant donation, or they hope to be, getting a significant donation toward that construction, so, and whoever that donor is, and if it works out, there will be some significant savings to the town, because that's, that's money upfront that you're not bonding, you're not paying interest on that, there's, that is, you know, it's, I don't know the numbers, but that's, that's very helpful, so if there are any, if anybody listening-
Yes, exactly, if you're out there.
Put that in the amount of time.
So, can I ask Carl?
Please.
Carl, what would be the minimum size lot for a new freestanding school?
Well, just for comparison, you know that the Tucker is, like, less than two acres, I think, so that'll put some scale in your heads. I think four or five is probably the right number as a minimum size, 10 is more ideal, gives you certainly more flexibility, particularly if some of the land is wetlands or, you know, that sort of thing, so, but four or five is probably the minimum size you'd want to consider.
To be able to have parking and green space.
Right, you know, separate drop-off for buses and parking and some grass play areas and play structure areas. And, you know, depending on the program, but if it were pre-K to five, you could probably do a three-story building reasonably, and it'd have a compact footprint, but that's what would change too, if you had more space, you might want to consider a two-story building instead of three, and it would spread out that much more.
And, no, I'm not going to say that now. Any other, Dr. Palchek?
Just one that hasn't been mentioned, with the, even if a donor were to drop 10 acres on us and $50 million to build a new school.
We'd still have to run.
I was on the school committee the last time around. Opening a fifth elementary school means you are going to ask basically 20% of each elementary school population to move on a particular day when you open the school. I look forward to your deliberations on the school committee when that happens, because I don't want to be there.
But, if I might-
Please.
We had a superintendent, Dr. Giuliano, and when the fourth elementary school opened, he knew how to do it, and what he did was, he began with just kindergarten and first grade, and then he grew. So, the principal then, of that school started with 60 children, and when she left, she left 660 children at the elementary school, and it was seamless, so it would, you know, have to take some thought.
So, did, so, should I just ask, so, did Glover partially open as an early-
No, Cunningham.
Oh, Cunningham, yeah. Oh, when it reopened, it just partially opened for that?
So, you're, and I think that it's worth talking about, Dr. Giuliano, in other communities, when they close schools and make condos, then they need buildings, he kept it alive by renting it out to Dacia Montessori in a Milton Academy class, so that when we went in there, we went in with K-1, and then every year we grew a grade, and then we pushed those people out, and we didn't have to meet any codes, because it had been rented out as a school. So, in six short years, five short years, 60 to 660 children, and so those children came, and he also created the Cunningham School District, so that it, I called it eclectic, it had streets from all the three schools, so, you know, Tucker, Glover and Collicott children all went to the Cunningham.
Also costs so much to have it run around a whole other school.
Yeah, I mean, it is, I mean, because then you need another principal, you need another, it's just, staffing is more expensive too, way more expensive. more expensive, too, way more expensive.
Okay, so, um, thank you. Thank you for this, uh, this was an excellent discussion. So, I have on my list of stakeholders that we need to, so, let's pause for a second and we'll talk about, I'm sorry, did you?
No.
Yeah, uh, for two seconds, Carl, and then.
Sure.
So, on our list of stakeholders, I have select board, town meeting, um, some of the neighborhood associations, um, and I'm, I'm using Fuller Village as a sort of a, well, I think Fuller Village, they, they host a candidate's forum typically around election season, so, um, that, that would be a good opportunity. And I was thinking of, as we've done in the years past, taking our budget show on the road, we can take this on the road. And, and have a few meetings, um, to engage these stakeholders. If there are other groups that people think that we should be reaching out to and beyond these groups, beyond the neighborhoods that are potentially affected by construction, you don't have to come up with them now. If you, if you have them, please, but you can email them to me and then we can, we can work those into our presentations.
So, can I ask a question on that? So, um, are you, are, if, if you're saying for the, the road show, is it for both short and long-term solutions? Because even though we're, we're voicing our long-term, like, the long-term needs to go over to the buil- this building committee that will come about and, not that they'll start from scratch, as we've discussed before, but they'll take all this and then move on from there, right?
Yeah, so, so I, I, I'm really focused on the long, on the long-term solution. Because, and that, that dovetails into the second part of the conversation and, um, about talking about the building committee and the, in the upcoming special town meeting and town meeting in, in April. So, um, what I would like to do is I would like to hand off to that building committee as complete a recommendation as possible, um, so that their ramp-up time is as minimal as possible.
As possible, uh-huh.
So I think, and, and I think also in, in doing our, we, we sort of took on this role of being the, um, the advisory or investigating, investigating phase of this, that, sort of going through all of that and talking to the stakeholders and saying that this really is a consensus, and, you know, I think, I think you allow them a, a degree of analysis, but, um, you know, I think if we say B and they say we really think D is the best answer, then, you know, we'd, we'd have to have a, a conversation about that, but my anticipation would be that if we vet this.
Present it the way we, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That we should all be on the same page.
Yeah.
So, so it, first part, if you can think of any additional stakeholders, why don't you just email them to me so that we don't have to spend time here in session to do that? And does anyone else have any last questions for Carl before we?
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all your hard work.
This is, this is made.
Today was really helpful.
Yeah, every, every presentation's been excellent and we better, thank you for everything.
Thank you very much. Good luck with your deliberations.
Thank you for everything, Carl, and to Paul, too, for, for everything you've done for us.
Thank you. All right, so that, so, and I, I think, frankly, for the short-term solutions, we should be able to come up with it ourselves and talk to the, the capital committee about that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, yes, Member Rosemary.
Um, and I think in terms of the long-term solutions, I'm hearing some winnowing going, going on in, in terms of some of those options, and I wonder whether, um, maybe at our next meeting even, that we might want to reduce, take some off of these, off the plate. Um, you know, I think we're getting.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? At our next meeting, we're at, which is going to be at the Collicott, wait, Collicott?
Cunningham.
Cunningham, apologize. We're going to have the open forum, right, about space?
Yeah.
Okay, so that'll be an opportunity for.
Yeah.
A little bit of exchange, I suppose.
I think we're, we're getting to that stage, but I'm hesitant to do it without, without doing some of this, some of the, for lack of a better term, road show and, and talking to the other stakeholders, lest it seem like we're, we're trying to guide this more than we really are. Number one.
So, uh, but, so, Ada, to your point, though, I agree with you, like, if we're, we're coming, we're building a consensus of we're all sort of on the same page, but if we, if we don't present everything that facilities has, you know, researched, vetted, and recommended to the building, like, to the building committee that's appointed, then would they then go, oh, we have to look at all the different options, but to show them, you know, leave them there, leave everything there, but then recommend, because of the road show and the feedback and everything we've done, that we still think, like, one and two are the two best options? But not take anything off, because then, again, that would delay, that they would think they'd have to go and do all that and look at every nook and cranny, which we really kind of already have, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So, building off of that, uh, February special town meeting coming up, I've, I've heard indirectly that our, our article passed the warrant committee. So, this, as I think of how this process unfolds over the next eighteen months, this is the roadmap that I've come up with, but, or temp-, I don't know, roadmap I've come up with, but, so please chime in, because it's, it's written in pencil. So, I, I think it's important at the February town meeting that we, we advocate for the creation of this building committee for a number of reasons. The first and foremost is that it will allow the moderator to create this committee and pan-, find the volunteers and panel it, get them together in a room, elect a chairman, get them off the ground by April town meeting. My hope then is that April town meeting, we can find, I, I know that the budget is going to be very tight this year, but April, May, yeah, the annual town, the annual town meeting. We can find some money in the budget to have them move the construction process into the preliminary phases on the orders of, so, tens of thousands of dollars. I, I don't know what that would be, but for comparable numbers, I, I think the next phase for the fire, um, space, the fire building committee was, was around fifty or sixty thousand dollars, so something in that area. And then that gives them a year from May 2019 to May 2020 to, to work on one of these proposals and hopefully come back at town meeting in 2020 and say, "This is it, we've spent the money, we've got an architect, we've got an architectural firm, we're doing," to pick a, a random one, "the addition at Glover," to pick a random one. "This is what it's going to look like, this is what it's going to cost, this is it, we need the town meeting to vote for an override or not, or we found some other way to fund it for this many millions of dollars," and have that discussion a year from April. Does that, does that make sense to people? Does anyone else want to, want to chime in and, and talk about that? Member White.
So that makes great sense to me. The only thing I'm thinking about is, um, I know that the town moderator appoints the school building committee, do we, as a school committee, have any say in terms of membership, how many members are on it, and whether it, we're looking for people who have building expertise, are we are looking, are we looking for lawyers who might have building expertise? Thinking back on the makeup of the last school building committee.
Uh, I, I think two, as the article is written, two of the, I think it's a nine-member committee, and two of the members are, are us, two of us. And I'm sure we can offer suggestions. I, I think that, at, at that point, the building committee will be exactly that, it should be lawyers and it should be people who build things and manage buildings professionally to manage a construction project, um, which is why I think over the next five to eight weeks that, you know, a lot of the, frankly, political, not to use that word pejoratively, but discussion about what are we going to do, is going to have to take place.
Okay.
So, and some of that may extend into that, that period, but I, my, my sense is that, um, that, that should all happen before that, or at least I would like that to happen before that.
Okay, that sounds good.
Member Rosemary.
Um, yeah, I'm just trying to understand how this, um, fits with the model of what the fire station, um, building committee is doing, in that they're going to February town meeting, they're obviously several steps ahead of us, but, um, and they're getting money for design work, for getting construction drawings.
Correct.
Done.
For three stations.
For three stations, right. So, would we be asking for construction drawings to be done at the May 2019?
Yeah.
Town meeting?
Yeah.
And can we really do that for fifty, sixty thousand dollars? If, I mean, if, if it took two-point-seven million for three fire stations, I would think divide that by three and.
I, I think, I think frankly, if, I think frankly, that's what there is in the budget for, for May, for this, for this May. So, my answer would be, I hope so. But, but if, if they, if they need to bid it and it, and it comes out to bid it higher or if, if, if the number's higher, then, then they won't be able to do it. And, but, but at that point, um, they would have, they would have figured that out over May, June, July, August, and in September, they can start talking to the warrant committee and, you know, there's a potential chance to get more money in, at the October town meeting. Whereas if, if we, if things are delayed, then, you know, we, we basically lose a year, if that makes sense, so.
Okay.
Yes, Member Rosemary.
Two more. One is, um, I understand that at the warrant committee, um, their review of this article, they added a recommendation to, um, in the warrant committee's recommendation section, that they voted to approve it, but they are recommending that two of the members, in addition to the two school committee members, would be from the Board of Selectmen or their designees, so, you know.
Great.
You know, and there are, there are people with building and legal experience in there and, and hopefully that would, um, and there was a second thing that I forgot.
Okay. So, um, obviously to be continued next week, that'll give us a lot to talk about. I hope that, a lot, I hope there's a high turnout for the forum and we'll continue to have this discussion. All right. So, um, and thank you, thank you all. It was a very productive discussion. Finance Subcommittee.
Okay, um, Finance Subcommittee met this week, and, um, we have several things that we, um, voted on to bring forward to you tonight, so I'm going to go over those. The first is, um, wage adjustment for minimum wage workers. This is in accordance with the Commonwealth's, uh, minimum wage increase. So, uh, I will, I would move to approve the increase in the pay rate of all employees currently being paid at the rate of eleven dollars per hour to twelve dollars per hour, retroactive to January first, 2019. Second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, um, all in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. The second thing is a preschool tuition increase, and this is, this is being done, or we, we on the Finance Committee approved it in order to try to keep the preschool program relatively close to self-sustaining. Um, this, this keeps it, keeps that in line. So, I moved to approve the increase in tuition for our preschool programs for the 2019-2020 school year as follows. The half-day programs at Edge Hill and Blue Hill campuses from the current thirty-three-fifty to thirty-four-fifty, an increase of a hundred dollars. The Galroad Three Full Day Program from four thousand dollars to forty-one hundred dollars, again, an increase of a hundred dollars. And the Blue Hills Full Day Program from eight thousand doll-, eight thousand dollars to eighty-two hundred dollars, an increase of two hundred dollars, but of course, it's double the, you know, it's full day rather than a half-day. So, that's my, my motion.
Second.
Any discussion of this? Seeing none, uh, call the vote, all in favor? Again, that's unanimous, thank you very much. Also, um, the reauthorization of the Milton High School Student Activities Fund, this is the same thing that we did last year, we just have to approve a maximum for the Student Activities Fund checking account, and last year we approved it at forty thousand dollars. All this motion is, is doing the exact same thing as last year, the ceiling is still at forty thousand dollars. So, I move to approve the annual reauthorization to fund the Milton High School Student Activities Fund checking, checking account to the maximum of forty thousand dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's again unanimous. Uh, and finally, I'm going to do an omnibus vendor warrant motion. There are four, because we, um, didn't do this at our last meeting, because it was just dedicated to the, um, the building, um, and short-term, long-term space needs question. So we have four. I move to approve vendor warrant number twenty-four dated December twentieth, 2018, in the amount of four hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and fifteen cents, and to approve vendor warrant number twenty-six dated January third, 2019, in the amount of three hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-five cents, and to approve vendor warrant number twenty-seven dated January tenth, 2019, in the amount of two hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents, and finally, to approve vendor warrant number twenty-eight dated January seventeenth, 2019, in the amount of five hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and four dollars and sixteen cents.
Second.
Uh, all in favor? That's unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have one more question for Finance.
Sure.
Can you just speak to, um, just like an, I guess I can, uh, just an update on the budget, where, where we're at? I know we discussed it and then, did we vote, did we vote on it, or when do we have to turn it into wa- the warrant, or where are we at with that?
We've already turned it into the warrant committee, we already voted.
We're holding tight.
They're, we're holding tight for now, we still don't know all the money, um, so it's, it's just, we're just sort of waiting until, um, the final figures come out, come together.
Right, and then I know, um, I think I, I queried, but the, the article about the, the money, about the, um, equipment in town, they've rectified that, that that's not going to greatly affect the, the, the asks for all the departments, including ours, for next year, is that correct?
So, yeah, so, so that, so I'm on, I'm on the, the capital committee, and that, that was discussed, um, in, in some depth. To back up to your other point, too, I think that the warrant committee, too, I don't, I don't think they have moved very far in the budget process.
Okay.
Because they're still, they're focused on February town meeting as well. So, um, but in terms of the capital project, so, between the, the bonding issue they had and moving forward with the fire stations, the, the, actually, the capital requests from all departments got disrupted this year. So, the, our bottom line is that most of our facilities-related capital projects are moving forward. The roof, the roofing project for, um, for Pierce, I'm sorry, for Glover, I think is going to be deferred, and, um, I, I frankly, at this point. And I frankly, at this point, don't know what's going to happen with our computing devices at the middle school level. That part of it is still in flux. So, but, but our other, our other capital requests are moving forward. So that part of it is not finalized. And that process too is also playing out as well, because they, those numbers are becoming semi-solid, but they're not, they're not final yet, so. So that's that. All right. Approval of minutes, so I'll move approval of the school committee meetings from November, minutes from November 17, 2018.
Second.
Thank you. Would anyone like a moment to review them? All in favor? No, I'm sorry.
No, I'm good.
All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Old business, none at the moment. Citizen speak topic response?
None.
None. Citizen speak? Is anyone in the audience here for citizen speak? All right. I'm sorry. Next meeting agenda items. So we'll be at Cunningham?
Yes.
Officially at Cunningham?
Yes.
At our next meeting next week?
January 23rd.
Thank you. And then we'll have.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Are we starting a little early? Are we having a tour?
Yes.
Are we in the library?
Yes.
Yes.
I know.
I believe we're posted for 6 o'clock for a tour.
6 o'clock.
Before the 7 o'clock.
At a 6 o'clock for the tour? Okay.
I believe that's supposed to be 6.
Yeah. We'll send out the, we'll send out the details.
Okay.
For that. And if that disrupts subcommittee schedules, then we can, we can deal with shuffling subcommittees as well.
No, we'll do the tour. We'll, we'll.
We have policy of five or six. Yeah, we'll figure out, I can't, we'll figure out policy. Let's figure out something.
We need to have it next week though.
Yeah, I have, we have some things we have to do. Okay.
Okay.
A lot of things actually.
All right. So you guys can work that out with the schedule.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
And, so I'd like to move along, so if there are any topics for the next meeting agenda, just please, just please email, email me or the administration.
Before we keep going, I want to remind the school committee and the viewing public that in honor of Martin Luther King, the Milton Interfaith clergy event that's been going on for decades is at the Concord Baptist Church on Monday, the 21st. It begins at 6:30 till 8 o'clock, and I'm proud to tell you Milton Public School student artwork, song, music, compositions, and it's an extraordinary event. And the clergy has two day, two activities planned for, during the day on Monday, service projects. One is in Matapan Square, higher up in Matapan, cleaning up the grounds, and the other is making bags that will be delivered to those who live in the city of Boston and need toiletries and things to get through the winter. So to the Milton Internet Clergy Association and to all the Milton Public School staff who worked with their children to do writing and art, and will be there that night singing. Thank you. And to the Concord Baptist Church for hosting us.
Mm-hmm. Take care tonight.
All right. So at our next meeting, we'll have our, we'll have the site council presentation, we'll have the space forum, and anything else, please email me.
Okay.
And did a citizen speak for the, and, all right. So I'm going to move to go into executive session, the purpose of which is negotiation strategy with union and non-union personnel and strategy with regard to litigation, not to return to open session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Bella, thank you. This is a roll call vote. Member White.
Yes.
Member Rosemarin.
Yes.
Dr. Craighead.
Yes.
Member Eberhart. Yes.
Yes, sorry.
Member Bella?
Yes.
Yes, Dr. John Healy, yes. We are adjourned to executive session, I'll adjourn to held session. Thank you.